But then, he told me it doesn't have to do with the color. I'm like, it has to do with the color. The five is maroon and the shirt's burgundy.
Okay, we are called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, November 6, 2023. I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are here in great appreciation of some nice things that are happening around our town. We are honored to have the Representatives of Fermilab with us to share some of the exciting news that they are generating in their home base. And we've always been honored that when it was all decided back in 1966, Batavia's address would be, or Fermilab's address would be Batavia, Illinois. So from that, we have gained great honor and appreciation. And I am very, very honored that we have that area to the east of Batavia, which is 6,800 acres off the development rolls, but a better use, I cannot think for it. Tonight, we are also thankful for the members of the City Council who are here to make decisions of importance to our community. And we just asked, and we know that each one of them in their own hearts and minds is here to do what is in the best interest of the community of Batavia. As always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soils in defenses and liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be shown to each and every one of these men and women, joined by all those others from our country, as they go about their vital missions in defending the liberties of the world. Tonight, as always, we will ask for appreciation to the community. And we know that Batavia is here and being well-served by those and all the elected bodies that have presence in our town. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Saron, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Well, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Peeper?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Ewer? Saron?
Here.
Vocal singer?
We have 11 present, two absent, and one vacancy. Alderman Chantet on the computer?
Remotely.
So the actual number of absences is three? Looks like it.
Yes.
Okay. Let the men just reflect that. Reminder of item four, that if you're going to address the City Council, we ask that you come to the podium and specifically use the microphone that's there, because this meeting is all being recorded and will be replayed on BATV. And it's important that you speak into the microphone, because if you don't, you won't be hearing very much on TV. Moving to item five, items to be removed, added or changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything tonight? Is anybody aware of? Okay. And we will move then to item number six, which is presentation of consent agenda. Alderman Chantet, do you have that, that you can do that for us?
I do, indeed. Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. To accept and place on file the planning commission minutes for August 16, 2023, historic preservation minutes for August 28, 2023, building reports, September 2023, City Council financial reports for August 2023 and September 2023. Approvals, the August, I'm sorry, the October 27 payroll in the amount of $992,914.53. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,413,264.50. City Council minutes for October 2nd, 2023. Ordinance 23-51, amending the city of Batavia subdivision code Title XI of the city code. Resolution 23-120-R, approving task order number eight. That's with engineering and resource associates, for a moment not to exceed $39,890 to design and obtain a construction permit for the Fox River stabilization. And then ordinance 23-47, that's amending the liquor code for the creation of Class E6 liquor license for sale and consumption of an arts, crafts, cooking, or entertainment studio and other purposes. Your Honor, I would move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion second for the approval of the consent agenda is presented. Any discussion, questions about? Kirk, call the roll.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Thank you.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
11 yes, 3 absent.
Motion's approved. All right, moving then to item seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody tonight? Could you come up and use the mic? Can you give us your name, please, for the records?
I certainly will. Good evening. My name is Susan Russo. I am here tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters, Central Kane County, to invite you and all Batavia residents to a community meeting to be held at 7:00 PM on November 15th at the Baker Community Center. The topic for this meeting is the Tri-Cities coal problem and what we can do about it. Too many residents of St. Charles, Geneva, and Batavia do not know that their public utilities purchase most of their electricity from a coal-burning power plant in southern Illinois. In the case of Batavia, the city purchases all of its electricity from this plant. This special event is being held in the hopes that more Tri-Cities residents will become aware of this fact. The emphasis of the community meeting will be on the "and what we can do about it" part of the title. We will share our visions for a cleaner future for the Tri-Cities. A vision that is achievable, cost-effective, business-friendly, and in step with the clean energy revolution currently underway in our country. We will share our vision of how we can get there, working with you, our city leaders, our residents, and businesses. This vision includes practical steps that our residents can take going forward, including how they can positively impact decisions in our city government. Our mission is for all of us to be partners with you and our community. This community meeting is not a rally or a protest. We are committed to supporting rational, constructive dialogue, collaboration, and problem-solving to achieve a cleaner energy future for the Tri-Cities. So please, come to the community meeting on Wednesday, November 15th. It will be held at 7:00 PM in the Collins Auditorium of the Baker Community Center at 101 South Second Street in St. Charles. We look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
I'm going to have to miss part of that meeting, because myself and all the other mayors in the area are already pre-committed to another meeting that night with mutual ground. They're having a dinner meeting, so I won't be able to get there right away, because that's what's going on. And it's not that I'm staying away, it's just I already, myself and everybody else in the valley that's got a mayor's title to them has all been invited to this meeting with mutual grounds, so. I'd encourage anybody that is here who would like to go, I'd like to have some of us go down and hear what they have to say, and thank the League of Women Voters for their continued good interest in Batavia. Anybody else this evening want to make any comments? I guess not. Moving then to a proclamation. Laura, were you able to find the letter? Well, Alderman Keenan Miller, who used to sit right here in the corner, he's now sitting out in the audience, because he came in the other day and presented me with his very short letter of resignation, that he was leaving the City Council because he has business demands on himself, and he's sorry to lose him. And I think we probably should have the letter somehow. Laura and I have misplaced it, I'll take the blame, but we got it up there someplace, but I just don't have my hands on it right at the moment, so. Would it be okay if we voted to accept his letter? Okay.
Do you not accept it?
No, no, I just, I think we have to accept it.
We've tried that.
He's going to get upset if we don't accept it. Would somebody care to make a motion to accept the letter of resignation for Alderman Miller?
So moved.
Move by, Wolf, second by Malay, okay. Court, call the roll on that.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron? No. Making life hard. Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
I guess.
Peeper?
Anna Marose, aye.
Chantet?
Present.
Yeah, thank you. I think there are enough ayes, but. Nine yes, one no, one absent, three present.
We got the majority of the council. Just enough. I'm going to ask former Alderman Miller if he'd join me at the podium. Normally been the case, when we have somebody leave the City Council, we do pass a proclamation, appreciating their good efforts. So I'd like to present to the City Council for their action, the following proclamation. Whereas Keenan Miller has served with honor and distinction as a member of the Batavia City Council, representing the citizens of the Seventh Board from May 2019 through October 2023, serving during a time of dynamic changes and challenges, including increased economic development in our historic downtown, upgrades to our infrastructure, residential developments, and the COVID-19 panic, which changed lives worldwide. And whereas it is acknowledged that members, a number of actions and projects were commenced that included major upgrades to the city water system, construction of a significant improvement to the city's wastewater treatment plant, a flood mitigation project for the Mahoney Creek, intersection improvements to Main Street and Deer Path Road, and renovations to City Hall. And whereas during his tenure on the Batavia City Council, Alderman Miller served on the Public Utilities Committee, which facilitated the approval of infrastructure improvements that included the wastewater treatment plant improvement project. Now therefore, following a vote of the proclamation of the Batavia City Council, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, signed this proclamation and presented to Keenan Miller as a statement of thanks, appreciation, and admiration for the many hours of time and effort he devoted to the services on this elected body. The hallmarks of goodwill and watchful governing that he has given back to this task provides a true and lasting trademark on the community of Batavia, and a grand place for each, showing it as a grand place for each citizen in our town to live and call Batavia their home. We also want to note that his efforts have enhanced the raising of families, the enjoyment of retirement years, sharing in civic life in general, and being proud to call Batavia, Illinois their home. So Keenan, on behalf of the City Council, I'd like to present to you this. And would you like to make some comments? All right.
Good evening, Council. Thank you all for the many years that we've served together, and I appreciate you guys' service, continued service in this body. I also want to thank the staff. A lot of the things that the mayor talked about wouldn't happen unless you guys were so great, so I appreciate your efforts as well. But thank you, current Alderman, former Alderman that I've served with, continue doing the work that Batavia needs done to move into the next phase of Batavia, to help build a better Batavia. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion that we accept the proclamation as read.
Aye.
Court, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
12 yes, no, no, 2 absent.
Motion's approved. And I'll thank Keenan one more time as he's going out the door. All right, next, we are very honored tonight to going to have a presentation by folks from Fermilab. And this is all exciting news, and this is really good news, so I'd ask that each of you introduce yourselves for the record, and that we then will carry forth and take with great interest what you're about to offer.
Okay, well, thank you very much for this opportunity to talk about some of the exciting things that are coming up at the lab, with a focus on what's coming up very soon regards construction. My name is Steve Bryce, I'm a scientist at the lab, and do you guys want to introduce yourselves?
I'm Kennedy Hartsfield, I'm the long baseline neutrino facility, near-site conventional facilities project engineer. That's a mouthful.
I'm John Zott, I'm the construction manager for the long baseline neutrino facility here at Batavia.
I'm Becky Thompson, Head of Education and Public Engagement, and I help make sure that this group of people can talk with you all.
So I think we have a set of slides, if it's possible to display them. Oh, I could have done that. Sorry. Okay, so as I said, I'm a scientist at Fermilab, and I'm going to be talking about some upcoming construction work that's part of a much larger project, an exciting project, the project LB&amp;F Doon, that will be the lab's future for the next 20, 30 years or so. And so, and most of the questions, if you have questions, I suspect most of them will be referring to my colleagues here for the details on the construction. Okay, there we go. So just to remind you of recent history with long baseline neutrino facility at Fermilab, we had public meetings back in 2015, there was a groundbreaking in November 2019 for the work that will be done at Batavia, and then initial prep work in 2020. And so what we're going to be talking about is a new round of prep work before construction of a set of buildings, new buildings on site happens about a year from now. So the prep work for that construction is going to resume this month, with an anticipated start of construction in the summer or fall of 2025. And what we'll be building are two single-story and two multi-story buildings, underground lab spaces, and access roads, utilities, and other infrastructure. And the facility will start operating early in the next decade, 2031, 2032 or so. And there's a website, a newly launched, right, website, that's available for further details, and there'll also be contact details at the end of this presentation if there are follow-up questions afterwards. So let me give a quick recap of sort of the big picture here. LB&amp;F Doon is the largest international physics project hosted by the U.S. Department of Energy. It's the largest science project they've ever done, multi-billion dollar. It's a collaboration with more than 1,400 scientists and engineers at 200 institutions in more than 35 countries across the world. So the world is going to be coming here to Fermilab and to the second site in South Dakota to study neutrinos, one of the fundamental particles of nature, and solve some of the big questions about the origins of matter in the universe. I would love to delve further into that topic, that's my home territory, but I'll leave it there. If you guys want to ask questions, I'll be quite happy to answer. So that's the big picture, that's what we're doing here, which is the two sites, one at Fermilab where we generate the beam of neutrinos, another site in Sanford, our underground research facility in the Black Hills of South Dakota, where they're detected. But focusing on the Fermilab end of things, so shown here, you'll recognize the Fermilab site and the location of the City Hall, and then in red is indicated the area of the future facilities, and that's the area that we'll be clearing over the next couple of months, and the area that will have the construction work happening in 2025. So what will be happening? So upcoming, we'll be doing tree clearing during the remainder of fall and winter, deliberately in that season, so it's outside the nesting period for birds and the roosting period for bats. We'll be moving topsoil in the winter also, as a smart choice, to be outside the bee foraging season. Over the next six months, we're going to be bringing in equipment and trailers, removing shrubs and trees on about five acres, that red box that I showed you on the previous slide. At the moment, the average tree coverage is about 20%. We'll be moving soil and doing regrading work, and we'll have the equipment removed and the trailers by the end of the spring 2024. So this is prep work for construction that's going to be happening in 2025. Anticipated noise impact, all the prep work is planned to occur during normal weekday daytime hours, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Noise levels anticipated are expected to be those typical of construction sources, and the kind of equipment that we'll be using are tree-cutting machines, chainsaws, excavators, bulldozers, large trucks, et cetera. So my final slide here, here's Becky Thompson's contact details for further questions, and also details of the Fermilab Community Advisory Board, both the webpage and in case of Becky's contact details, an email and a phone number. And I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Because this just came up as we redid our tree ordinance for town, you're going to be taking out however many trees that are in that area there. Is there a plan to plant new ones elsewhere on the property to reforest that?
Yeah, so the project itself is not doing planting, but Fermilab is fortunate to have onsite our own lab ecologist, and there is a site-wide, you know, it's a really large site, site-wide program with lots of initiatives to plant native species and things like that. So there are plantings, I can't comment, because frankly, I don't know the details of exactly what they're planting, but that's something that we're always evaluating to be good stewards of our resources.
So as far as entering this facility, is it going to still be through the main entrance off of Kirk Road, or is there going to be a separate entrance? And then also, the construction, like, of course, the trucks and everything, because there is that thing in the middle of the road almost blocking across from Geese Road.
Yeah, so there will not be a new entrance or any entrance immediately adjacent to where you can see the work in red. The construction entrance will be Couts Road from the south, which is, runs, you can, well, you can tell it's to the south, just off of Butterfield.
Butterfield.
All right, I'll have to keep checking with the guys who actually know. And so that will be the construction entrance, and there'll be no other, no new entrances developed for this.
So does that road run behind the Savannah neighborhood? Like, how close does that entrance come to Savannah or any of the other neighborhoods in that area?
The construction entrance on the south?
Yeah.
I mean, that corner, you can see there, like, the Prairie Path Trail is pretty much that blue line, so it's to the east of the Prairie Path Trail.
So there is no real residential?
No.
On that, on the north side of the street?
Yeah, it's the white road that runs north-south.
You can see it there off of the kind of oval-shaped circle.
Okay.
Other questions? Well, I would just say that when this started, I was a young newspaper reporter covering the City Council. And I can remember coming down, it wasn't in this building, we were down the other end of the street, but people would come into the meetings, and it was all just being put together and planned, and so then they wanted to know what bad things can happen here. Will it smoke, smell, pollute, turn on bright lights, light, turn on bright lights, make noise, generate traffic, or keep us up all night? And jokingly, I got quoted in the Sun-Times as telling people about 20 years later that all those proposals that people thought was going to happen, none of it ever happened, and Fermilab has turned into one of the greatest neighbors we could ever ask for. And I think from what now has been established there and what's going forward, I'm very pleased that, number one, you're still here. You know, there was efforts to take you and move you to Texas, and all kinds of different ideas. And I was a resource person that got asked a lot about all Fermilab during all those discussions. So I wear a political coat filled with Fermilab shots at me, and I've survived every one of them, and I just want to say that I'm very pleased that this is happening, and that, you know, when I see, when I was invited out there the day the International Electrical Engineers showed up to present you with the plaque for inventing the technology that allowed for the creation of the MRI Medical Research Machine, that was a real high point for me, because you think of the impacts that that now has had on the world that we're living in, and probably all the lives that have been saved, and people that have been made well, and everything else. That by itself should be worth whatever the price was that we've paid for Fermilab, but now you're going in some really different directions and exploring some really neat things. And I have people tell, I have had other mayors tell me, you know, Jeff, you're living in a town that could become one of the most famous spots in the world if Fermilab does everything that they say they want to do. So I take that with a great degree of appreciation, that that's going to be, what's going to be happening here, so we don't have to worry about you dumping a bunch of houses on us or anything else, it's all visiting people and showing up. And my downtown business people tell me Fermilab is a great, especially the restaurants, is a great generator of business for them, because so many of the visiting people that come in there to experiment or work come to downtown Batavia to eat. So we appreciate the good business you're bringing us to, so. Welcome to Batavia, we thank you very much, and I appreciate the communications, because it's very important that people in town know what really is going on there.
Yeah, thank you very much for your kind words. And the only thing I would add is that the lab values extremely highly its relationship with its neighbors, and we are keen to maintain a good relationship and happy to be sending business your way.
Thank you. Okay, moving on then to item 10, the approval of a Class D1 restaurant liquor license for Trollobellas located at 15 East Wilson Street. Who's got this one? Chief?
I can take it.
Can I just skip, sorry? There we go.
So we completed a, the Batavia Police Department completed a background check investigation determining whether Thorabella, which will be located at 15 East Wilson Street in Batavia, we also took a look at the owners, managers, Brian Green, Debbie Green, and Brittany Sabatino, to see that they might be suitable to obtain a Class D1 liquor license. All of the required documents have been submitted, and we have found no issues which would preclude the business or its owners from receiving a Class D1 license. I don't know, do we have anybody here from the business tonight? No, nobody? If you have any other questions for me?
Do you have any questions?
I hope someone knows when they're going to open.
I've been told they're taking reservations for around the holiday season, so maybe soon?
What food are they going to have?
Some of you have been here a while and may know, but we do a pretty deep dive into people when they show up and want to have a liquor license approval. And we've made the decision that the Batavia Police Department is kind of the lead partner in this thing, and Chief Mazza is doing a fabulous job of researching some things that are happening in Batavia, and you'll be hearing about some more here that we're not happy with, that he's going to be bringing up for conversations. So we are going to be, I think, trying to really tighten things up here, because we, a lot of them go by the rules, we got a couple that don't go by the rules, and we've now, I think, got some issues we want to take up. So this will be something more and more, but I just want to thank and commend Chief Mazza, because he really has jumped to the task of really researching this and having his department investigate things and whatever, so. So I think we've got a pretty tight lid being, you know, turned on this whole thing. And, you know, it's nice that we do have restaurants wanting to serve liquor, so I'm all for it. But as long as they can get by Chief Mazza and his team, I'm very comfortable with it. So thank you for coming in, chief.
I would just say one thing, it's really the team, not me. The investigators we have do a fantastic job, so.
You're the man telling them what to do.
Yes.
I didn't know it was Brittany. Brittany Sabatino is the current business owner in Batavia. She owns one of the spots in the Wilson Street mercantile. That is awesome that she feels so much value in this town that she's expanding with her family. It's exciting. Thank you.
We need a motion then to approve the liquor licenses. Is that where we're going with this?
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Jazzy, second ball on my. Homeless singer, I'm sorry. As long as we get that right. Any further discussion? Kirk called the roll.
Homeless singer.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Serum.
Aye.
12 yes, no, no, two absent.
Next, chief, motion is approved. All right, then item 11 is the monthly Chamber of Commerce report. You're on.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. I have, first of all, I want to thank the mayor for a wonderful mayor's breakfast last week. It was very informative, very enjoyable. The homestead hosted us. We had great reviews from your presentation, and we're thankful that the homestead provides such a nice place for us to host that breakfast. I wanted to extend a warm welcome to the businesses that joined the chamber this past month. We are delighted to have Mocha Coffee, Thrive, Bright Futures Speech Therapy, Larson Packaging Products as part of our growing chamber community. I want to mention that it is last call for nominations for our 2023 Citizen of the Year Award. The nomination letters are due to me this Friday, November 10. This is an award given annually to an individual who exemplifies giving back to the community through outstanding service and dedication. You could email your nomination letter to me at margaret@bataviacamber.org. We will announce the winner at our Inspire Celebration. Well, we'll make the announcement that they won in December, and we will honor them at Inspire on April 25, 2024. I want to mention a couple of our upcoming events. We have Coffee and Commerce at the Tea Tree this Wednesday, November 8. We have a ribbon cutting for U+ Medical Aesthetics, Wednesday, November 8 at 2:00 PM. They are located in the lower level of the Chamber building. We have our Networking It, it's going to be held at the Batavia Moose Lodge on Wednesday, November 15 at 4:30. Our Out to Lunch, drop in and have lunch with the Chamber staff will be at El Taco Grande on Friday, November 17 at noon. I want to mention our upcoming Batavia Women in Business Holiday Lunch. It will be Tuesday, December 12 at Enticing Cuisine at 11:30. Each year, the Chamber and the Batavia Women in Business Committee collects items and funds for the Batavia Toy Access Drive and Batavia United Ways Adopt a Family. So please drop off new unopened toys and gift cards at the Batavia Chamber of Commerce to support families that need our help this season. And also, please join us at this fun festive event so that we can celebrate the holidays together. I want to mention that, again, we are very excited that the Chamber is doubling the value of Chamber Bucks beginning Monday, November 13 until we give away $5,000 in free Chamber Bucks. These holiday bonus bucks have been given away the last several years. They will expire March 31st, so it's an initiative sponsored by the Chamber to inject $10,000 into our local retailers as quickly as possible. There's a $50 cap on bonus holiday bucks per residence. When you shop local, you help the entire community, strengthening our local economy. We can all help by shopping local and giving local. Chamber Bucks, holiday bucks is one example of the initiatives that the Chamber does for the business and the community that is free. Some other examples of what the Chamber provides at no charge are the $1,000 of Chamber Bucks we just gave away to add Chamber chairs. Our monthly Networking It is no charge for businesses to connect and build relationships. The Chamber gives away two entrepreneurial scholarships in partnership with the Fox Valley Entrepreneurship Center. We offer a new member showcase that is at no charge to showcase new business members. We offer a Coffee and Commerce morning networking that is free for everyone to join us. We have a not-for-profit forum that meets every month that helps not-for-profit leaders collaborate and depend on each other. Each month, we spotlight and collect donations for a specific not-for-profit in our networking. The Chamber offers four $1,000 Batavia High School scholarships for a senior, furthering their career. We offer and facilitate Chamber Bucks all year long on top of the $5,000 that we subsidize through the holidays. We recently added an Eye on Aging event for free information for residents to learn more about aging gracefully. We provide information and connections with local, state, and national level government officials, like today's webinar with Congressman Bill Foster. And throughout the year, we offer ribbon cuttings to celebrate new businesses. The Chamber looks for ways to promote our businesses in town. One way we do this is to notice what wonderful business, what our wonderful business owners are doing and nominating them for awards that they are qualified for. We take great pleasure in seeing them receive the honor and publicly, in the publicity that goes with it. Three businesses in Batavia were recently honored with awards. New Moon Vegan was honored with the Entrepreneurial Excellence Award winner in early-stage entrepreneurship category. And my guests tonight were honored with the Influential Women in Business Awards by the Daily Herald Suburban Business. The awards are presented to outstanding women executives who excel in business, civic, and personal arenas. We're so pleased that Karen Hollis from K. Hollis Jewelers and Lisa Farley from Accurate Door have been honored with these awards. I wanted to invite them both up to talk a little bit about what this means to them. Is there any questions for me before I turn it over? Great, thanks. This is Lisa Farley from Accurate Door.
Hi. You know, I just want to thank Margaret, Patty, and Shirley over at the Chamber for everything that they do for businesses. It is incredible. I've belonged to other chambers throughout my career, and what they do for businesses is so absolutely, they just, they just help us in so many ways. I'd like to talk a little bit about what this means to me. You know, I kind of accidentally got into this door business. My husband passed away a few years ago, and prior to that, I had joined the business, but had to learn real quickly how to do things and how to run it. And it was because of some of the volunteer work I've done here in Batavia that it gave me some of those skills to do what I've needed to do. And I'm so grateful for those opportunities. Everything from United Way Education Foundation, met so many people along the way who have been so supportive. And this Batavia community is absolutely incredible. The one thing we're doing at Accurate Door that's a little bit different, any of you who know the trades right now, there's a huge skilled trades gap. Finding people, training people is very challenging, and we're seeing a lot of tradespeople age out. And they don't have any skills. They haven't developed any skills beyond the technical training. So at Accurate Door, what we're doing to fill that gap is as technicians come in, we're kind of bringing white-collar ideas into the blue-collar world. Emotional intelligence, mindset training, leadership training, we're bringing in financial training, sales training, we're bringing in spiritual intelligence, we're bringing in all different aspects so that that 20-year-old has a career along the way. And again, all this I've accumulated here in Batavia has been a part of that. So this award is for so many people. It's not just for me, it's for so many people who've helped me along the way, and I really, really appreciate it. And to the Chamber for everything they do to help us, connect us to people. Thank you so much.
I wanted to introduce Karen Hollis from K. Hollis Jewelers.
I totally agree with Lisa with thanking the Chamber. It has been our goal to immerse ourselves into the community, and we were really excited when we live in Batavia and to open a business in Batavia. I just want to say thank you to the Chamber and all of the wonderful people in the tri-city area. We were really excited. It's been a year now since we've been in our new place, and there's a lot of amazing things happening, so stay tuned. And I really look forward to growing with Batavia. Thank you.
Well, I would just like to thank Margaret and our two presenters tonight for their saying the nice things about the Chamber and the work that Batavia is doing with the Chamber. And Margaret's leadership there really has been a shining star in Batavia and has really, I think, brought us to a new plateau of business awareness and success and ingenuity. So I can't say enough about how well I feel that the whole thing is kind of unfolding. And so thank you, Margaret, for your good efforts.
Thank you so much, mayor. It's a pleasure to work for Batavia. I just love our town. Thank you.
All right. Next thing is item 12, which is Ordinance 2342, amending the City of Batavia subdivision code Title 11 of the city code establishing a tree preservation regulation. Who's got this one? Alderman Wolf?
We talked about this at the committee of the whole, and this is basically establishing the tree preservation regulations to go along with our Tree Commission, to have that in the city code and all called out with all the different things we've added into that.
And from the committee, we made the three provisions that you had asked with the fines, with the governmental replacement, as well as the adding honeysuckle and buckthorn, and it's hard to say I was going to reverse them, so, as the removal trees in there, so.
And, you know, just for the public to know that we added in that, you know, any government entity that's doing a project also has to abide by their same rules, including ourselves. So we replace trees that we take out.
Do you want to make a motion for the?
Yep, I'll make the motion that we approve Ordinance 2342, amending the City of Batavia subdivision code Title 11 of the city code establishing tree preservation regulations.
Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah for the approval of Ordinance 2342, amending the City of Batavia Title Code 11 for establishing a tree preservation regulation. Any further discussion?
I'm here. I think there's somebody from the public.
Oh.
Hi, I'm Chad Rigsby. I live over on the east side. I was frantically, at the end of work today, trying to comb through the proposed ordinance. I haven't had time to really look at it a whole lot, but two relatively minor concerns, I think they're easy fixes. But two things that I do think should be addressed. There's no procedure in place in the ordinance for amending preservation plans on the fly. And sometimes that happens during construction projects. And also, certified arborist is a term used in the text, and the word arborist is defined in the definitions portion. But in the definition portion, there is no mention of any sort of accreditation or anything like that, no sort of, you know, ISA certified arborist or anything like that. So those are, again, easy fixes. I think that's relatively minor, but they are things that I think should be addressed. I've also, I'm not formally on the Tree Commission, but I've had the opportunity to attend a couple of meetings. And we did talk about the tree preservation ordinance during the couple of meetings that I was able to attend, but those were back in the spring. And I've been so busy at work that I haven't kept track of what's going on with council. And so a few days ago, I learned that this was up for a vote. And so this kind of caught me off guard and makes me question a little bit how much the Tree Commission, you know, was made aware and part of the process. I'm not trying to throw shade on anybody. I'm not trying to get anybody in trouble or get anybody mad at me or anything like that. City staff seem like nice people, but this was a surprise when I heard about it, that, oh, this is coming up for a vote. In fact, it was already discussed prior, apparently. And so I would have completely missed this, even though I'm around the Tree Commission orbit. So whatever that's worth, just thought I'd mention those things.
Thank you. I think those are worthwhile things that we can certainly address moving forward. Alderman Lehman?
I was just curious, Chad, can you share your credentials with us?
I sound so pompous. I have a PhD in environmental sciences. I'm a research scientist and technical support, essentially an educator with a private company. We have a research lab. I work out of the Morton Arboretum, and I'm very much in the arboriculture, urban forestry industry, helping write best management practices for the industry, conducting research, doing education. I'm giving two talks at the Illinois Association for Arboriculture tomorrow and Wednesday. So I'm in the industry, and I'm pretty steeped in it. So, yeah.
I would just mention that we have a vacancy in the Tree Commission right now with the death of Frank Sopp, who was our city arborist for 40 years. So maybe if he'd like to submit some names and paperwork. Do you live in Batavia?
Yes, sir.
Could you send me down a resume about yourself? And I'll submit it to the council here and have you fill Mr. Sopp's vacancy. He just passed away here a couple of weeks ago. I just spoke at his funeral. So he was somebody that really did kind of keep the Tree Commission going through some other times. So, yeah, please do that. And now everybody's seen you and appreciates what you have to offer. Alderman Beck, did you want to make some comment?
Questions about what Chad had brought up. What does, what does it change, the amending preservation plans on the fly? What does that entail and kind of what, how does that change the ordinance?
I don't know that it would really, unless we wanted to actually change the ordinance. I mean, normally, we do allow for substitution of plant materials that are in a plan just because, you know, certain types of material may not be available or may not work for whatever reasons. So, I mean, we normally would allow for certain levels of substitution of, you know, different types of plant material in any landscape plan. So, I mean, that's pretty common. The arborist part, we put a definition in there that was something we took from, I believe, Artlet or another community that had that, so it's reflective of that definition, I believe. The, one other thing I was going to mention. Oh, yeah, the Tree Commission did review this before. So, I mean, this was, you know, done in cooperation with the Tree Commission. So they had seen the draft of this, and we did get input from them before we put this together.
Add more specifics in here about the certified arborist and what a certified is? And so does this need to go through just another round before we vote on it? Should we table it for tonight? And?
You can table it, and then we can bring it back at the city council. You know, we can develop some language and put that in there for that. Sure.
My question, whether or not we had, you know, three ways to become a certified arborist or if there's just like one national standard or something we want to use, you know, figure out what's applicable to that for being certified for that.
I think the intention is to have an Illinois-licensed arborist through the, licensed through the state.
As long as we just pick one, you know, how we want that to be, and then maybe just call that out in the definition so it's there. And then I see, you know, like if there's an issue during a plan and all of a sudden something changes and they have to do something different, there is a procedure for appeals that's within the ordinance. So to me, that would be a way we would handle that without having to rewrite and simply call that out there. This would be a way to do that.
Yeah, I mean, that's a way. Yeah, I mean, that's a way you could also do it as well. But normally we do, in a landscape plan, allow for certain substitutions if it's an equivalent type of tree. Nursery doesn't have X type of, you know, genus of tree or whatever, you know, so we'd allow for substitution.
And to answer Chad's question, when you said that this had gone through the Tree Commission and they kind of reviewed it, did they have a meeting recently?
Not recently. It was a while ago, I think, that we had because we had to kind of, you know, take what they took, what their comments were and then, you know, develop it into an ordinance. So it was a little while ago, if I remember.
It seems like we talked about this like a year ago.
We've talked about this just in this year. We've talked about it earlier this summer. I sit on the Tree Commission.
Remember, I lost a couple of months, so.
And the other thing was, we had some extremely heavy agendas and this was a matter that was something that we felt that we could postpone and so that too was the reason for a little bit of a break in time between the time we talked with the Tree Commission and when it's coming before you now.
Yeah, we had planned this earlier, but, you know, we took it off the agenda because there's just too many things going on.
I'll make the motion that we table it and get that stuff cleaned up in there, you know, and then move, bring it back to us with that changed.
The motion is second to table the existing ordinance now and bring it back with the revisions.
You have to vote to table it. You can just table it.
I can rescind my earlier motion that we pass it and then say we're going to table it after discussion.
The motion can rescind or withdraw your motion.
Yeah, withdraw my original motion. Make the new motion that we table it.
Motion to table it.
You know, I might note here as a moment of history, so I am told that Batavia was one of the very, very first communities that decided to try to experiment with a tree commission in about 1953 when our town got hit by this Dutch elm disease. And supposedly Frank Sopp always said that he never could keep count of how many it was, but Batavia lost thousands of mature trees in that period of time over about a three-year period. And there were some older neighborhoods that looked like they were brand-new subdivisions by the time they got through cutting down all these trees. So there was a major movement on the part of the city to create a tree commission and they had some pretty viable people on there, Eldora Hoover, who the school's named after, and Ruth Johnson, who was a local newspaper reporter, Ruth Burnham, who was married to the president of Marshall Fields. There was a lot of folks that were very active in the community that jumped into that thing and really brought it on. So, the trees that we have today, which is pretty respectful high in growth, is a lot due to that effort by the Tree Commission. So there's a legacy of success that follows this group and, you know, if we want to redo it, make it even better, I'm all for it, but I'm just saying that we've always had this and it's been one of the prides of Batavia, that we have this great tree selection, that people can come in and see a variety of trees and whatever have you. And there used to be a, when Frank Sopp was tree, city arborist, there was always this question about what is the tallest tree in Batavia? And I think that's probably debatable, but Frank Sopp always used to say, he thought it was at 214 South Prairie Street. And I invite you to go down there. It's still there today. It's in the front yard at 214 South Prairie Street. And the guy whose kid planted it there in about mid-1950s, it was a twig that Eldora Hoover had put in a cup and they had given it to all the kids at J.B. Nelson School to go home and plant these trees in your yard in response to the Dutch elm disease. So this kid came home and dad planted the twig in the front yard. His father used to say, what are you going to do? And he planted this thing in the tree, according to the father, who's now dead. That thing grew three and a half times taller than his house and he had all these branches and leaves and everything blowing on him forever because we overplanted this tree in the middle of his yard. So that's the story of the, some of the amusing stories of trees in Batavia, 214 South Prairie Street.
Think of three, maybe four trees that survived me mowing when I was a kid that all came from Gustafson and Arbor Day.
Right, right.
Every year, we always had trees and we planted them and we made sure they stayed alive.
Right, that was all part of the Batavia curriculum.
I have a question. Just thought about this. Do we want to perhaps adopt this and then come back with an amendment to it? Because what will happen is, you know, we have two weeks that are going to be, you know, where there will be no tree preservation ordinance in place, just in case something should happen. I don't know that anything will, but I'm just wondering if we want to adopt it and then come back with an ordinance that amends it.
We want to pick the language that needs to go into-
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea-
What we're going to say is a certified arborist. Do we know, is it accreditation through the state of Illinois or?
ISA. I mean, it's through the state of Illinois, ISA.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we could just change it to have the wording read in the definitions that plan prepared by, what is it, ISA?
ISA certified.
ISA certified arborist. I mean, that literally would just then give us the definition that the state uses.
Why don't you just get all that, put that all together and let's bring it back here as a finished ordinance so everybody knows what-
I'm not worried about it.
The moving parts are.
Somebody trying to come in and tear something down.
I mean, I think there's enough-
Wipe out trees, I don't think that's going to happen.
There's enough community sentiment and support and support of this that there's no big argument.
Anything that comes in, we can delay until we pass that.
Just want to do it the right way.
Okay.
All right. Are we done with that one then?
On the table.
Scott, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, did you vote on the table? Did you table it? Oh, okay. Sorry.
To vote on the table? Do we have to vote on table on a motion?
When you withdraw a motion?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, we should.
You should vote on it. Okay, or call the role in the motion to withdraw the ordinance.
He can withdraw. The maker of the motion can withdraw the motion.
I can withdraw.
But to table it, you need to vote on that because not one individual can decide to table something. So the vote is, there was a motion to table and there was a second, I believe, if not a second, and so we need to vote on that motion.
Wolf?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Your is absent. Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion is approved. Okay, moving to 13, the Administrator's Report.
Laura? Good evening. Like to report a few things from community and economic developments. We heard news that the Illinois Office of Tourism is going to be shooting a video for their Illinois Makers series at Hearth and Hammer. The program makes videos that highlight businesses, their products, and what it means to be Illinois-made. So really proud to have them selected for this program. Winding Creek has just over 50 permits to date and several homes are already occupied by residents. The Park District has removed the home that they acquired on the 200 block of South River Street. We get a lot of questions about what's going on there and this is going to be part of a larger project that's known as the Elstrom Greenway. Phil Elstrom made a very generous donation to the Park District and they have been utilizing those funds to acquire properties along South River Street and the river and intend to create a new park in that area of our downtown. Staff is reviewing the RFPs that they received for the South River Street corridor. We received 11 proposals from that RFP. The downtown plan, we are scheduling a public open house the evening of November 30th. That'll be in city council chambers and the advisory committee and city council will receive an advanced copy of that prior to the meeting. And also, we are reviewing applications in the CED department for the Building Inspector Plan Reviewer position and the part-time administrative assistant position. The deadline for application is November 3rd. The Police Department participated in DEA Medication Takeback Day on Saturday, October 28th, and the Police Department received 13 pounds of unwanted prescription pills. That is an ongoing program. There is a receptacle that's in the police lobby, so anytime people want to dispose of their unwanted medication, you know, it's very bad for our drinking water and the wastewater treatment plant to, you know, dispose of those down drains or in toilets. And also, those types of drugs sitting around in homes can sometimes fall into the wrong hands for those who have not been prescribed that medication. And so it's a really important safety reason as well that we like to collect those medications throughout the year. On Monday, October 30th, both the Batavia Fire Department and the Police Department participated in the annual Batavia Apartments Trunk or Treat event. Despite the fact that the weather didn't exactly cooperate that day, the turnout was huge and the kids were really enthusiastic about seeing our public safety employees participate in that event. In Public Works, we were requested by the Fox Valley Patriotic Organization if we would add a new Riverwalk light to the entrance to the Flag Day Monument and so we installed that last week. I think it's a nice addition to the area. In Information Technology, Matt Stocking joined the department last Monday. He's a GIS analyst and working with Mike Kamen in that department. And in Finance, we have, we are now advertising for the open position of Senior Accountant and so you can head to the city website if you know, if you are interested in the position or refer someone if you know someone who is interested. And I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about leaves tonight. We are doing our pickup on the west side and that is through Friday. The east side is next week, beginning November 13th to the 17th, and then we'll come back to the west side, weather permitting, on November 20th to the 24th. But remember that even if all of the leaves haven't fallen by then or you didn't get a chance to pick them up in the month of December, you just need to put them in the Kraft paper bags. They don't even need a sticker and Groot will pick those up in the month of December. That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
We have one more thing I think we should do under yours. We need to set a date for people to submit their application if you're a resident of the first ward and you'd like to apply for the-
Seventh ward.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Used to be the first, that we switched them around. Seventh Ward Alderman. We generally give it about a two-week period for people in the ward to send us resumes and then the way this is done, we give copies of the resumes to all of you. Some of you have gotten here because of this and the first time. And then we have a meeting and each one of the candidates comes and talks to you and answers questions. And then at the end of the meeting, we go into the back room for a couple of minutes and you decide who's going to be the new alderman. And so that's the fair way to do it. That way I take myself out of the politics of this and somebody says, well, the mayor appointed his friend or whatever, I don't need that and you don't either. So this will be a joint decision of all 13 of you who are on the council as to who gets it. Now, it got out that Keenan had resigned, so I've already gotten one submittal of an application for it, so I will want to put it out to the press and Lori will certainly be putting it on that we'd like to accept applications through probably the next city council meeting, which would be on the 20th. And then we will do it, have the interview at a Committee of the Hole meeting, maybe the next night or whenever it works for the council.
The next would be on the 28th.
Will be on the 20th?
28th would be the Committee of the Hole.
Okay. So is that okay with everybody that you know that's how you're going to do it, that we just want to make it, get it out there that we are accepting applications for Seventh Ward Aldermen? You need to check your boundaries because a lot of them have changed in your wards and we've got to make sure we're not interviewing somebody that lives in a different ward than what we're appointing. They're supposed to live within that ward, so.
Mayor, if I can, I'd also like to mention the budget meetings. We're having the very first budget meeting at Committee of the Hole tomorrow night and then there is the public hearing for the budget, which is going to be on the following Tuesday, which is November 14th.
Get it all out there so everybody can adjust their calendars and know what's going on, but I think it's somewhat important that we get the council back up to full strength, so I'd like to get this done by the end of the month as far as who's going to be the new Seventh Ward Alderman.
Thank you.
Very good. And finally, tonight, I'd like to welcome back Mark Foster to the news reporting of Batavia. Mark was with us in his younger days and then-
Retired.
Yeah, he's now retired, but now he's working a part-time retirement gig for, which paper are we going to read you in?
Kane County Chronicle.
Kane County Chronicle, okay. So, we welcome Mark back. He was always, quite honestly, one of the better, most concise and accurate reporters we've ever had, so I'm pleased that he's back with us and he calls it like it is and it, you know, I think he helps spread the word to people about what's going on in the community, so it's important that we have him in that area. More than welcome. We, as a community, and one thing was said earlier in the meeting, I'd just like to make an observation about. We're talking about the Elstrom Greenway, which is down on South River Street. It starts at Webster and goes on down. Now, I happened to, I was an old friend of Phil Elstrom's and he was one of my big supporters the first time I ran for mayor, so. And then he had become the county board chairman and right away, about the first thing that happened after I got elected mayor was Phil's in my office telling, well, I want to bring the bike trail through Batavia. And so I went through that with him and that was my first exercise in hellfire and damnation because there was a whole bunch of people that didn't want the bike trail, specifically up on North Batavia Avenue because it was going to be in their backyard and there was going to be all these drug dealers and burglars and all kinds of crazy stuff, of which, here we are 40 years later, none of that's ever happened and so now we're looked upon as a model by other cities as to how to put a bike trail through your community. Anyway, Phil really had his heart in Batavia and he didn't have much family and he was, for many, many years, he and Peg Bond, who was the chairman of the Plan Commission for a number of years, she and he did a lot of stuff together and they came up with some ideas about doing things, including buying this piece of land where this building is. They were some of the promoters of it with the city council and former Alderman Brown's father was then the mayor and he took a lot of hellfire and damnation for it. It was going to be a crazy idea and nobody'd ever use it and now if you look and see what we got here. So Phil died last year, but before he died, he told me that he looked at, on everything that had been accomplished and he was so proud of what had been done that he wanted to leave some money for the main channel of the Fox River to be further enhanced and made it more attractive for people to visit it and enjoy it and watch it and make Batavia look good. And so then Peg's former friend had passed away first and she had left the money to build the Peg Bond Center. That's where that came from. And then I'm aware of what Phil Elstrom has left now and the money went to the Batavia Park District to begin to buy all this park space. And between Phil and Peg, there's over $3 million been left to the downtown Batavia. And I mean, that's why I think people comment today about how nice it looks, but when you got people like that who really had it in their heart that they wanted to do something that really made this town stand out, I think that's true testimony to the generosity of people. And Phil left enough money that there's more in his account that the Park District has that they can buy the rest of the houses on South River Street as they become available and Phil's vision wants to have that whole area down there just opened up with, as you drove down Route 125, you saw all the beautiful aspects of the Fox River. So Laura and I have been working with Gary and others and we've been kind of redoing the west bank of the river, which is the one you see from the east bank, and so we're kind of been cleaning that up little bit by little bit. And the one thing that I think we've got to get out of there is we got to get that island out of the middle of the river there that was put in there when they didn't take out the Cofford Dam at the Wilson Street Bridge and it all floated down and locked itself up on the water and the sewer lines and the gas line that's buried in the bottom of the river right there. That was, that island that's north of, the real island is just a made-up thing that got, took all the Cofford Dam stone and threw it there, so. So I guess one of the things we're talking about, you know, this would be something we should maybe use some of Phil's money to because it's not a, it's not going to be an easy thing to take that thing out of there because you probably have to do it by hand because you can't send an in loader in there because you don't know exactly what underneath it is. A gas line, the main sewer line coming over from the east side, and a water line. So you've got to be real careful what you're doing down there. So I just think that's something that as a city council, we need to get that addressed because I know Phil was always kind of bothered by that. And he didn't tell me at the time how much money he was leaving. But he left the money to do something real grand here. So I would hope that we can get with the Park District and get some of this done. Because I'm amazed today when I look at what happens on the night of the prom or the night of the homecoming. And here come all these kids all dressed up. And where they want to come is come down here and stand on the island and have their picture taken with the river in the background. That's a big, big thing.